And the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we'll have roll call members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Heron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I'd like the board to approve the agenda. Is it to be amended?
Yes, I do have a couple items to add to the agenda. Item ten B, establish lease threshold for right to use at $10,000 for Gatsby eighty-seven. And item fifteen B, authority to sign inter-agency agreement between Scott County and Scott County PSA for the Phalen Hollow Water Project.
That was fifteen B?
Yes, ten B and fifteen B.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. With that, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Go ahead, Luke.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood's second. Any discussion? All the fair votes say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to approve the minutes from the September seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. If you've had a chance to look at that, I hope you have. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
Assuming, Mr. Chairman.
If the Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Addington, second. Any discussion? All the fair votes say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item is the citizen's expression period, and we're going to just do a short statement. We'll get right into that. Citizen expression period upon the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, and the county and or water organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise in business life. If no one has signed up to speak, as if anyone signed up, Ms. Starnes.
They have not.
We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizen's expression. With that, we are citizen's expression. If I want to speak, you may come to the podium and do so. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My little horse this morning is kind of froggy coming out this way. My name is Freddie Bishop, and I represent the town of Duffield. I'm a member of the town council down there. And we're having some problems with our boundary lines. And they've suggested that I come before the board and bring it to your attention. If I may have some stuff to hand out here to help. I don't know what I'm talking about. We approach.
You may, yes.
This is only two of these. And I'm glad I'll let you to look at this. I want to. Of course, if you look, I've got those things number one, two, and three. And if you'll notice, they're all pretty different. I don't know where the problem started. I would imagine that it starts with Lenoisco making. I talked to the gentleman there, who's a heck of a nice guy, Steve Gibson, I believe is his name. And he's, I talked to him on a couple occasions, and he's never tried to explain why we're going too different to show the mountains down there are too different. The flats are too different, actually different. But those are the ones on the bottom down here. This is a nine-one-one boundary. I don't know who put this one out. You can tell down here on the side. But if you'll notice, the Duffield boundary line starting down here on the lower right side in the middle there goes all the way up across the line of children. It'd be in the boundary line. But starting on this cliff mountain way, six fifty-four there, if you notice the blue line that goes up through there, that is the dry branch that comes out of Clifton Mountain. That's supposed to come, it comes all the way down and goes over them to the north fork of the Clench. That branch, the way I've got it, and it got, perhaps you're sure of it, that is the boundary line up on the big stone end of Gate City. That's up on the big stone end, where it comes up like that and it comes under the railroad and the highway and goes on down and hip these back into the North Fork of the Clench River. And of course, I don't know where I've come up with this, but most of your, all your boundaries, if you're adjusting or whatever, that way is supposed to be under natural circumstances, like the breaks or top, right top of the hill or top of the mountain, always have a straight line. And if you, of course, as I said, if you notice that straight line across there, that's the one that they're showing now is our big stone gap end line. Now, look at, if you look at number two now, it's all different. See the little red line down there where it says Duffield School? See, that goes all the way up. And that line ties in the dry branch. And it goes on there. There's a little bridge right toward that Peterson Cemetery. Look at this right there, where the water goes through there and makes its way on the over to the river, the North Fork Clench River. And look at, if you look at number three now, it's different. But it actually shows the same thing that I was talking about here on the number two map. And it also has the adjusted, the county does some extended down on the bottom down here where it says level two oh four. And that's a new boundary adjustment that's taken place, seemed to be like it was in November of oh four, I think it was, when they did that. Yeah, it's noted down there. I think this map here was done by Mr. Gibson at Lenoisco. This is, I think, sits right down there. But this, this right there, if you notice how the yellow line goes all the way up and around, that brings it all the way back down to the beginning. Now, that's the one, this is the map that I think is the right one. And like I said, this is what I suggested, that I come before you guys to try to determine which one of these was supposed to be used. And of course, I don't know if you give the gist of what I'm here for. And I don't know what to tell you. I know you guys are the governor of Scott County, and I think you have to go through the court procedure and you guys.
That's correct.
To make any changes.
Any adjustments has to be approved by the board supervisors. And so, we have, we have hired a mapping person. And so, we have, and maybe can help with this and get established where it's supposed to be. I don't have a clue. I mean, what you presented here looks good to me. And that one, that nineteen seventy, I think, the older looking map. And so, I don't know. But we can do that. And Sally, you and Freddie, you all can chime in here too. Sally, if you, your thoughts on it as to what needs to happen with it. Any adjustments, we in Lenoisco cannot adjust those. And I'm sure they used whatever they thought was correct at the time. But anyway, we get our mapping person involved in it, and Ms. Cagley, our county attorney, to see exactly where the boundary lines are. But no change, if I'm correct, Ms. Cagley, it cannot be made without the enforcement of approvals. Is that correct?
Right. And court proceeding, you know, just boundary line adjustments.
So I don't know if any adjustments been made unless it happened, you know, the historical knowledge I don't have, but maybe go back and look. And I don't remember it ever being that those boundary lines were adjusted. Anybody else can remember? Sally, do you know?
Well, Lenoisco gave me the most current, which is the two thousand four. And Mr. Bishop and I have talked a lot about this. In fact, he drove me around and showed me, you know, where he thought the boundary should be. And he feels that when they did the adjustment in two thousand four, they added an area, but they took an area away. So what he is proposing is the original area that was taken away be added back in.
Yeah, yes.
I think that you have the core adjustment. It's just the southern boundary. There wasn't anything to the northern boundary at that time.
Okay. Because Mr. Bishop showed me that branch, and he said originally, you know, the boundary was, went along with that branch. So, you know, maybe our mapping person can come up with a conclusion on that.
Another reason that I'd like to get this straightened out, the adjustment that was made before, that's where I live now, down on the Gate City side of that thing. They did that for the purpose of getting more bodies within the area there like that. We're short of person on the council down there now. We can't get the field. And if we get this, if you look on that number one map there, again, all those buildings or houses and all that in there, that would incorporate them in there, and we could have some more people that would be, may get interested in trying, trying to help us out.
And this, furthermore, this would not require additional people to pay taxes in Duffield because there is no extra tax for the Duffield incorporated area.
So Thomas Village is not a part of Duffield, then, the town of Duffield?
No, it is at the branch.
Stream of water comes down.
I saw them looking at here. That's what I was thinking. Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll look at this and see. We can tell you anything today, you know, for sure. But we have people that can look at it and determine whatever, whatever we need to do. But you're suggesting that the boundary lines be moved to include more people?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that it's like this on map three.
Yeah.
That's where the purple, not the purple, the yellow line here, that would be the all of the country on the corporate hanging there. That's, that's the original. It was just like on that little box there that showed you there.
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at her now.
Yeah, I appreciate your time to help get this along. And I don't think there's any way to get it done before election time, but I'd like to see that done now.
We'll get on it. What's that?
Make some changes.
All right. We keep this, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep that for now. And then keep these two maps.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. Nobody else to drop a cut, so here I am. Richard Gilmore, six oh five Mallfield Road, Gate City, Virginia. Don't you remember me?
Yes.
My objective here this morning is to, first of all, I appreciate the letter that you sent to the governor about the roads in Scott County. And Sam, Ms. Starnes did a good job. I did find that two letters, I found it interesting that the fourteen students at Twin Springs could get more done.
Yeah, I was impressed too with that.
Maybe we need to get them to write a letter about the paper. I guess what I really would like to know is, have we heard anything as a result of these letters? Because I could ask my people if we're doing any good. Well, I don't know. The state letters, county did their jobs. I haven't heard anything. Have you all heard anything?
There has been some personnel changes.
The president, Big Don.
Yes. So other than that, I haven't listened. Ms. Starnes, you heard anything? So I don't, but I know there have been some changes.
I have met with the Bristol District manager, engineer, that's now over the Bristol District. After the first letter was sent to the governor, it came back down to the Bristol District Office. So we had a meeting. And since that time, the director of the Lenoisco area, Lee Scott Wise, and the city of Norton, has changed, not because of the letter. That was just something that was already in the process. So Alan Sumter is back as our director, and he's going to be working to get some of our issues fixed with the roads. And he will be at our November meeting, his first meeting back in the area. He will be here at the November meeting to speak to the board.
So the director, or what do you call him, is now in Bristol and not in Wise?
No. The Wise residency manager is Alan Sumter, and he will be at the November meeting.
Okay.
I've also met with the manager of the whole Bristol District, that's the thirteen counties, after the first letter, because the governor's office sent it to the VDOT commissioner, and then they sent it back to Bristol.
Okay. So something is going on?
It is. Yeah.
Well, that's great. That's great. Is there anything we can do? We had planned on writing a letter from the citizens, you know, to, after we saw your letters. Is that still helpful? Or would we just be?
I don't think it would hurt.
Okay.
Anytime citizens get involved in something, I could even hear at that level, it helps. And so, we seen what happened with those fourteen kids that came here from Twin Springs on the, within forty-eight hours, that road got mowed. So anyway, it was a pretty quick response.
Yeah. You think I should send it directly to Governor Yonkin or to our, to our?
I encourage, why don't you wait until, let's make this Alan, and except you, you can do it if you want to. I know Alan Sumter, and he will, the other people were good, but Alan, you know, he's really, really good at what he does. If you want to wait and give him a shot, give him a chance to come back, I encourage you to come back in November and hear him and speak directly to him. And maybe some of the citizens want to come and speak to him. But Alan will, I think you'll be pleased with him. And he'll, he'll use whatever he's got to get the job done.
Okay. So he's going to be here in November?
November, yeah.
Okay. Not to take any more time, but can I read you one thing?
You sure can.
We did plan on putting in our letter.
Okay.
And it's, it's not long, but it says, "Would you kindly fix the road I was already taxed to fix, so I'm not causing damage to the car I am taxed manually to drive? When I purchased it with the income you already taxed, which sits in the driveway of my home, it is highly taxed."
That sounds pretty good.
That's great. That's great.
That's the general feeling of people. And I realize that we don't necessarily pay taxes that go directly to the road. That goes to.
That's true.
But people just feel we're taxed and we're not seeing any Patrick Lake's road. But I appreciate your time. I do know that there are three ladies here from our general area that want to speak to you about roads.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Well, good morning. I'm back, but I forgot a few of the meetings. I'm getting old and I can't remember. But I will try to be here in November, since you're saying it'll be good to be back. I'm Peggy Tys from Snowflake Road, Jeremy Knowles, the condition of the road. And the last meeting that I was at, we talked to VDOT.
Say your last name again.
Tys, T Y U S. Peggy. And the last time when we was at the meeting, talked to VDOT and about the brush and the curves where you can't see around, and whenever you, when you're on that road, you pray that you don't meet the bus, or the FedEx man, or the UPS man, and any other oncoming. But the ditches is just, and when they come to scrape the road, they pick it up at the places where it's the rock bed. They can't scrape a rock and a sink. And we are so proud of the Twin Springs kids. We may try to get them on our road.
Yeah, like I said, I was impressed with them too. They did a good job.
And have you been over Snowflake Road recently?
I've not been through it recently, no.
Well, it's still, you know, the ditch and the road. I had pictures on my phone when I left my phone in, because I don't know if I've cut it off, and I didn't want it ringing during the meeting.
I drove it last, one day last week, and I went down Valley Creek and crossed back out of Snowflake that way. So I try to drive them some, you know, eventually I try to get most of them, so, yeah.
Well, what do you think?
It may work.
And another question, I mean, another thing that I think, you know, it's like the secondary roads, you need, they need to put the, to do a budget, like your personal. Sometimes you have to rearrange your budget on your personal stuff, so you need to, you know, put it on the secondary roads instead of the main roads. It's like the Veterans Memorial Highway was repaid, and there wasn't nothing wrong with it. And they did a good job. I mean, it's, it's good. And let me say, well, I guess it's just like Richard. I agree with everything. And all, I don't know why there's so many roads in Scott County that aren't paid. And this six-year plan, we've been on it for years and years and years. Is that still in effect, that six-year plan?
It is. But this year, but this year, there was no, the money they had wasn't enough because everything prices going up. There wasn't enough to do any projects on secondary roads. They're real rustic roads. There was no money. It was not enough to do any of the projects.
Well, they never had been, haven't they?
Yeah. Well, there has been, but there just not been, never, it's never been enough. And so.
But now, something you need to keep in mind, though, as time, when they do let that money go, currently, it's not official that it's on there, that the Snowflake Road's on there.
Well.
So as, as, you know, I've asked several times, you know, two years ago, I guess is when we was able to put roads on there.
Yeah, it's next in line.
Yeah. It's, but it's not right. Is that right? It's not on the VDOT's plan.
It's not on the VDOT plan, but we have a list of roads that were approved two years ago. As money becomes available on the six-year plan, that Snowflake Road's the next one to be on there.
So, so as time goes on, just make sure.
And have we been through?
Just through, through the supervisor.
And we look at that every spring.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, come spring, please. And it's like the Mallfield Road, McConaughey, all the dirt roads. I mean, they're all bad.
But you, you're hitting the nail on the head, is the funding from Richmond. You know, we've, we've talked about, you know, some of the things they've done in years past, you know, they cut the funding for basically down, down here. They closed the shop at Nicholsville, closed the one at Gate City. You know, there's a lot of things that, that happened that cut us out. And now, you know, manpower is a thing. So there's going to have to be some budget changes with VDOT from Richmond, because I think it's two thousand eight, two thousand nine, you know, they really, they really cut us bad. You know, so there, there needs to be a crew just for the secondary roads. You know, they, you know, that, but I, you know, so if you all do send a letter, that, I think that needs to be a part of it. You know, the, the funding has to change.
Who on earth do we need to send the letter to?
Well, I mean, we, we send ours to Delegate Kilgore, Senator Peian, and Governor Yonkin. So you could, you could include all three of them if you wanted to.
You said something about them paving Veterans Memorial. There are plenty of potholes in that road, and they don't. But what happens? They put money into a pot. And you have your primary, secondary, and they cannot, through the general standard, they cannot move money from one pot to the other. When I send paid five lanes wide, that didn't need to be paid in the emergency lane, you know, you go, you go a mile, it's five miles, you could go on a dirt road, one lane wide, you know. But, but they will not move it. They're not allowed to move money, and they will spend it somewhere where, you know, like, like what happened there. I mean, they, you know, they, they did that. And so, anyway, it's just the way it is, and I don't know how you could ever change that. But I wish they let us decide, have some say in what roads that needs to be worked on. And we don't have any say-so in it. No. They never come to us. When they, when they pave a road, we, when they start doing it, is when we know they're going to do it. It's like the bridge down here. We didn't know they were going to do Route twenty-three bridge across the Clench River. I didn't know about that. So they started doing it. And then, like Ms. Starnes, she drove it, said they, you know, they found, she found out, that's how she found out, by driving it. They were working on that bridge. And usually now, like in Mox, at the curve in Wallow Gap, the bridge, we knew about that, at Webber City. But this one here, I didn't know about it. But they put money in those pots, and you can't move it.
Well, that ought to be changed.
I agree.
Certainly, I agree.
This board should decide what roads need to be done in this county, but we have no say-so.
Well, we'd like to put our road in that pot.
I would. I would.
All second dirt roads in Scott County are bad, and ours, I know somebody that lives on another dirt road there and drove by it, and she said, well, we have to say your road is rougher than ours, so.
It is, man.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. With that, we'll come out of citizen's expression, and do thank everyone for coming and speaking. On this same topic, it's been a couple weeks ago, I was at the dollar store in Dagan, and there's some guys on motorcycles there. And they were from Connecticut, they were from Illinois, and some other place. And they said, the roads there compared to here is unbelievably better here. But they have the weather issues. They don't pave roads, rather they patch. Instead of motorcycle, you can't ride on their roads because they're so patched. And the weather, the potholes and stuff, they said, we love to ride, ride a road here because, you know, it's smooth riding. They don't have a lot of the issues that they have in the northern states. Well, they have some bad weather, and they just, they patch all the time. If you ever drive those roads, they do, they just patch them. And it's like riding on a horseboard, you know, most of the time, because they said, we love the roads here. And I said, can I take you to one of our meetings? I'd like you all to say that, because they said they love it here. They love the roads that we have because they're not patched and potholed and all that stuff for most of time. All right. Thanks, everyone. Next item, anything else in citizen's expression for many of you folks? Next item is item seven. Dr. Westover's here from Mountain Empire Community College. So if you would come, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good, good. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. Appreciate all the work that you all do. I know it's a sometimes thankless job, but civic responsibility is really important these days, and thank you for what you're doing. I'm here just to kind of share a project that we've been working on at the college. I can give you a little general update right now. Our fall enrollment, we're down just a little bit from where we were last year. We were actually, we held steady during the pandemic. A lot of students who could take online classes did and finished up their degrees, and we had our largest graduating class last spring. We're down about five percent in head count right now. Similarly, across regular FTE and dual enrollment. So our dual enrollment is down just a little bit. That's because our schools are smaller. Same with our, our general population. We've lost a higher percentage of our population than our enrollment decline. But we are about five percent down this fall. 5% down this fall. We've got some new programs, dental assisting too, just started. And we have a clinical research coordinator position, which is an allied health position, basically a non-clinical health position. So folks who might be interested in health information management or down kind of that path, it's an opportunity for them to work in a clinical research setting and to be the coordinator of, of a lot of data collection. The reason I'm here today is that we have been, we've been celebrating our 50th anniversary. We kicked it off in October of 2021 and we'll be wrapping it up here at the end of this year. Homecraft Days is of course October 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. I invite you all to come and join in that. If you have the opportunity, it's always a, a good time. We, as part of our 50th anniversary, our advisory board, our, our college advisory board and our foundation board both committed, our advisory board actually passed a resolution for the college to work on achieving a promised program similar to what Tennessee offers. So that students who want to come to me, community college can come debt-free and who, who may not have the resources to pay for tuition can have tuition covered. So we've been working on that for a little over a year. Our foundation director, Dr. Annie Greer, couldn't be here today. She's at the Tobacco Commission meeting trying to get some funding for our workforce scholarships with the Tobacco Commission. But we've been working on a promised program for Mountain Empire Community College and for our service region and our students. So I'll just kind of quickly go through the, some highlights here. As you know, we serve the, the counties of Scott, Wise, half of Dickens, and the west half of Dickens, and the city of Norton and the county of Lee. We have about 3,000 credit students, which in turn generates about 1,500 full-time enrollments per year and about 2,600 non-credit students who are working on industry-recognized credentials or continuing education every year. 471 students from Scott County attended MECC last year and 83 2021 Scott County High School graduates attended MECC the following fall. We consistently ranked first in the 23 institutions of the Virginia Community College system in our percent of head count that receive financial aid. We have very high need for our students. More than half of our program-placed students have what they call an expected family contribution or an EFC of zero, which is the highest level of financial aid or financial need under federal guidelines. So I'm going to show you just for the 2020 Scott County graduating class, we had an opportunity to talk to students about their plans. 83 attended two-year college, either here or Northeast State. 61 attended four-year colleges. 62 plan to go straight to employment. Six went to the military and 25 had no plans. So I can tell you that we are really focused on that 25 and possibly the 62 who directly go to employment but maybe under skilled in the employment that they go into. So we're really trying to reach that population. I want to emphasize that our, our promised program isn't intended to compete with our local four-year colleges or our universities, particularly UVA Wise. They're just up the road from us than any other four-year institution in our region. We know that for some students, four-year college is the best choice for them. And many have already completed a community college degree or certificate through their dual enrollment opportunities. The MECC Promise Program is, is really intended to assist the students who have plans to enroll in community college post-high school or those that go directly to employment. And we really want to focus on those that are undecided and try and help them see an opportunity and a pathway to a higher paying wage into a future. This graph, I'm just quickly talk about this one. This graph is, is really designed to show how we've tried to decrease. These are our local graduates that have been enrolled in MECC. And you can kind of see that in the most recent year, 2021, 317 local graduates and seniors enrolled in MECC. And we've been able to decrease the amount of tuition that's needed for students over the last five years. It's really kind of, this graph is designed to show how we've worked to reduce that amount of unmet financial need that a student has when they enroll in college. We looked at every graduating high school class for the last five years. About a quarter of our regional high school students have unmet financial need, meaning that they pay out of pocket for tuition expenses. Tuition is about $6,000 annually. And if a student enrolls in 12 credit hours, and the tuition costs increase if they take more credits. And, and I can tell you that in order to stay on track with a two-year degree, a student needs to take 15 credits every semester. So oftentimes they're already behind because they're not funded at a rate that allows them to continue a two-year degree in two years. And part of that is the federal government. Part of that is just the way that colleges are designed to, to count 12 hours as full-time enrollment when 15 is what's really needed. This amount after federal, state, private scholarship funding is applied, it's decreased by about 80% over the last five years. And our foundation has really worked hard. We've worked hard to try and find other funding to help students. And we've been trying to close that gap for students for a number of years now. Last year, we were actually contacted by the GNAN Foundation. The GNAN Foundation is a foundation that was built by the sale of the Bristol newspaper years ago. And we talked to them about our, our plans, our, our promise program, the fact that we would like to be able to give students in Southwest Virginia the same opportunity as those in Northeast Tennessee in terms of the opportunity to attend post-secondary education and without debt. They thought the idea was transformational and they loved our proposal and they promised us $750,000 to launch this program. So what we'll do with that gift is we'll invest it and we'll use the interest income in perpetuity to ensure that every high school graduate in our service region has an opportunity to attend college for generations to come. And we were challenged to use this gift to leverage on other funding so that we could ensure the long-term financial stability of the program. So as you can see, over the last five years, we've decreased the total unmet financial aid for Scott County students from about 157,000 per semester to, or per year to 37,790 this year. We've approached the Columbus Phipps Foundation about Dickinson County and they're willing to provide funding for every Dickinson County graduating student that completes a Columbus Phipps Scholarship application. We've visited with Norton City, with Wise County, with Lee County. Norton and Wise have tentatively agreed to fund their gap. We've, I'm not sure about Lee. We do have a, a large scholarship that we just received in 2022 from the, the state of Norman Graver, who was Big Stone Gap resident. And that gift along with about a hun, or a million in Buccaneer scholarships that have been provided to the college will ensure that every union high school graduate in Big Stone Gap will be able to attend tuition-free. So we're, we're, we're kind of putting together something that we'll be able, that we'll be able to announce for our entire service region. Our foundation endowment has, our foundation has actually agreed to fund anything that, that exceeds the amount of our gap. So if we can put this funding together and if we end up having more students come than we expect, our foundation has committed to taking unrestricted funds and utilizing those to, to ensure that we don't have any students who fall through the cracks. So we're kind of proposing a, a promise program for the students of Scott County. And we would announce this to the class of 2023 and announce that they would be able to attend Mountain Empire Community College debt-free for two years. They would just have to maintain a 2.0 grade point average, which is a C grade point average, stay continuously enrolled, enrolled for up to two years, or 72 credit hours, which is the equivalent of the completion of an associate's degree. They have to reside in the area and provide proof of residency via Scott County resident and a Scott County graduate, complete a federal financial aid scholarship because what we plan to do is have them exhaust all opportunities for scholarships available through everyone else. And this would be the last dollar scholarship that would fill in if they weren't eligible for federal financial aid or for the, the state G3 program. G3 has, has closed the gap a lot, but it doesn't cover things like teacher education or any four-year degrees. It's mostly for quick, short industry-recognized credentials or short-term workforce programs that are designed to go straight to employment. That would be a last dollar scholarship for tuition only. And right now, our, our gap is about $43,000 in Scott County. We've been able to close that gap from over 100,000, almost 200,000. You all may know about the Scott County Endowed Scholarship. We've been raising funds for the Scott County Endowed Scholarship for a few years now. Those funds go not just directly to high school graduates, but to all Scott County residents. So those funds would continue to, to wrap around and cover all Scott County residents. This would be particularly for the graduates who are coming out of high school in perpetuity. So starting with the class of 2023, we would be able to make this promise to them. So I am just here to kind of share that opportunity and, and of course, ask if there would be any funding available to close that $43,000 gap for Scott County. And it would be wonderful to be able to announce and to know that we have the funding to announce and to be able to support every student in our service region and to be able to say, you can come to college debt-free with no tuition costs. I know we hear a lot sometimes about the argument that students need to have skin in the game, that they need to have an investment in their education. And I can tell you that I agree. They do still have expenses. I don't know if anyone's connected with a, a college textbook lately, but the average college textbook is about $200. So if a student's taking five classes, they're looking at a thousand dollars just in textbooks. They still have the cost of transportation. We are a commuter campus. We don't have a residence hall, so students still have to find a get, a way to get to us. They have internet expenses, living expenses, and other needs that they'll have to cover on their own. I can also tell you about 75% of our students work, over half work full-time and still come to college full-time. So they really have a lot of skin in the game. College is hard and they still have to put in long hours of study to maintain their scholarship funding. And they'll have to pay for additional expenses outside of tuition. So hopefully the MECC progress, Promise Program will remove the financial burden of paying tuition, but it doesn't remove the challenges of earning the college degree, which is still there. So I would entertain any questions that you might have about a promise program or any other questions about the college that I might be able to answer.
Well, $43,000 is not a big, a, a large, huge amount like you would, you know, to cover what it covers. The budget committee, whoever it will be, can look at this during next budget cycle and see. It would be worthwhile, I think. I graduated from Southwest Community College a long time ago and was actually a co-op student through visiting co-company. And so it worked, it worked for me. And so it's, it was hard to work a full-time job in coal mines and go to school too, and how hard that was. But it paid off.
And thank you. You know, I can share more data with you around the return on investment for students economically and if you retain students. And our hope is those, those students who are not engaging in post-secondary after their high school, they're not engaging in work and they're not engaging in college. Our hope is that we can catch some of those and get them on the right path and, and retain them in the area. And also to retain some of our talent, you know, and to be able to say, this area gave to you, come back and give to this area and engage in some of that civic responsibility. So, thank you. And I'll be available. You all know how to reach me at the college if you have any questions.
Anyone have a question or comments? Any question or comments?
On, on one of your charts, I believe it was a bar graph, it showed between 17 and 18, 19, 17 and 18, there was a big drop. When did Ames Scholar start? Was that when Ames Scholar started?
Ames actually started in 2008, I believe. It was about 10 years before I got here. And Ames, what it does is it, it funds the first two years, if they're an Ames Scholar out of high school, it funds the first two years at, at MECC and then the second two years at UVA Wise. So we've got about 75 students in that program from across the service region this year. And we've really, we've strengthened that program. We, those students now get an iPad just like the UVA Wise students as soon as they come on our campus. They get activity passes so they can go engage in campus life at UVA Wise while they're still freshman and sophomore level at, at MECC. So we've really tried to strengthen that connection. What was happening where a lot of students would come and do the first two years and then they wouldn't go on to their four-year degree. And the, probably, I hate to say this, but the most worthless in terms of labor market value degree is a two-year degree that was designed to transfer to four years. So if a student stops out after two years and doesn't go ahead and finish their bachelor's degree and they're in an associate degree program that's designed to do that, oftentimes that two years doesn't have real value for them in the market, because of the labor market. So we've tried to strengthen the Ames Scholarship in that way. But that won't go away. G3 won't go away. It funds a lot of industrial technology programs, a lot of IT, a lot of healthcare. We, we do also currently have a lot of endowed scholarships, just personal scholarships, you know, like the, the one I mentioned in Big Stone, the Buccaneer Scholarship. Lee County has an endowed scholarship. But what we'll do is redirect funds for those or not necessarily redirect them, but still allow those funds to go to students who weren't necessarily this year's graduating class. So this, this part of funding, this Promise Program is designed for a kind of a control number that we know will be coming in and we kind of can see those numbers for the next four years and know that we can sustain.
Ames Scholar is also up to have this scholarship coming out of high school. This is not, this is, it's, it's 2.0 or C average.
Yeah.
Coming in. So I, I wish you the best and it sounds like a good program.
Thank you. Thank you. We're, we're excited and we will, we, I, I think we're committed to it. Even if we don't get the funding, we'd love to, you know, we'd love to have the, the funding and to be able to close that gap and, and not have to worry. But we know that you all have other priorities too. We just love to do one of them. So when, when the budget come time, budget time comes, I'll push on for you a little bit to help me know when the lobby.
And you learned about secondary roads today too.
You know, I used to live on a gravel road, so I feel your pain. I totally feel it.
Thank you, ma'am.
And her presentation's on your tablets.
And I left y'all some 50th anniversary pins.
All right, good. Very good.
Market the college for us a little bit.
All right.
Thank you.
I had seen this morning at Virginia Tech, their enrollment's up 8%. And they were, it was a huge number. And I'm surprised they were up that much. It was on the news this morning how much their enrollment was up. So it'll probably come back down there too eventually, the 5% drop you talked about, but I would say it'll come back. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Next item is item eight. Keith Wilson here, need a letter of support for a trail grant. How you doing?
I'm doing well.
All right.
I, I'm not Dr. Amy Greer, and he's just called out. Before I do this, I, I do want to reinforce, I serve on the advisory board for Mountain Empire Community College and one for Freedom. Yeah, a couple others. I, I made this presentation, basically her presentation, to the Sullivan County Commission in Sullivan County, Tennessee in 1999. And at that time, I asked for a penny, a penny on the tax assessment would cover the program for all the students in Sullivan County. And they adopted it. A penny at that time was $200,000 in the Sullivan County budget. And they adopted it. In 2014, that program was adopted by the state of Tennessee and is now statewide. I think Virginia will get there as well. But here's the main reason why I think, why I said, and why I believe we should do this. Kids raise to the expectation of their parents and elders. And I think we need to tell kids that a high school diploma is not sufficient in today's economy to participate in the labor force at the level most of them desire to do. It's just not true that a high school diploma is going to be sufficient. And so the leadership of the county and the leadership of this company by saying, our expectation, we're going to set up a K through 14 system because you need credentials or a degree post-high school to fully participate in today's economy. And that expectation is set when the leadership of the county and et cetera says, we're going to make it possible. We expect you to continue your education and we're going to make it possible for you to do that. And so by raising expectations, you challenge those 25 students to come and do and complete their expectation because a high school diploma just isn't enough for most kids. As a matter of fact, at Eastman Chemical Company today, you can't get a job, any job, without a post-high school diploma. No job. At the Times News, when I ran the Times News, the same job that you could get with a high school diploma, you could get without a high school diploma. In other words, the distinction wasn't high school diploma. You had to have training post-high school to get any kind of decent paying job. And that's true in today's society. And so I think setting that expectation, the county setting that expectation is, is a real reason. It's not that much money and it sets an expectation. It's not that much money, and it sets an expectation. So that's my pitch on that. I'm actually here to talk about walking trails. I serve as the president of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, but I really didn't get involved in this particular project through that. Mayor Bob Richards asked several of us to serve on a visioning group for Gate City. And we went through about a year's process of looking at ways that we could improve the life and livability of Gate City, Virginia. And back in March, April of this year, we had a community-wide visioning process. I don't know, I don't believe any of you will have that. In any event, we brought in several invited 30 or 40 people of Gate City and the surrounding area to come together and talk about how to make improvements, what the citizens of Gate City would like to see in their community. And several things came out of that. We then had a voting process and eliminated, came up with about four or five things on that list to do. Pickleball courts, by the way, is one of them that came out of that meeting, which I'm sure you've heard of. The other one was, there was a strong desire for an opportunity to walk, for walking trails and walking opportunities. Gate City is somewhat limited in that, and there was a desire, a strong desire, to have the ability to take a walk. Dr. Greer and I kind of took on that project to help see where we could go with that. And we went to visit, first of all, Jimmy Atkins with Wisco, because he's the pro. And got some maps and sat down with Jimmy and started looking at that. It became quickly apparent that Moccasin Gap was the issue. Now Jimmy tells us and showed us, I think it's Kingsport, MDOT or whatever those initials are. Freedom was the name of that group.
MTPO.
MTPO has a plan for Scott County. Scott County or please Gate City, Weber City are part of that Kingsport planning group. However, when we looked at that plan, the plan, and I don't mean to diminish it, for Gate City was painting a line on the side of the highway and calling that a bike route into Gate City. Basically, that didn't seem, it's safe to me, it didn't seem sufficient. Certainly, it had nothing to do with walking and the opportunity to walk and hike, et cetera. Every time I go to the doctor, he tells me walk, so. But beyond that, Jimmy also indicated to us that if you're going to get VDOT's attention in today's world, you have to connect destination with destination. They're not interested in recreational trails or anything of that nature at this point in time. And so when we looked at the map and looked at what needed, could be done, the idea came that connecting Gate City sidewalk system with the Weber City sidewalk system could be accomplished. But there's no way to do that, you know the topography better than I, without addressing that stretch through Moccasin Gap. Now, Moccasin Gap, as you probably know, was the route of the Great Warrior's Path. It was also the pathway of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail. The reason being, that's the only ground-level water gap through Clinch Mountain for 60 miles. So you have to navigate your way through Moccasin Gap somehow, some way. It, when we, when we looked at the map, the nice thing is we recognized that there's two overpasses that could in fact serve to help get that done. One of them on Kane Street, I have, I just have three copies of this. The line in black is the route that we identified quickly with a magic marker, that we could take and accomplish that. It starts at the municipal parking lot by Broadwater Trading Company, and it terminates at a soccer field in Gate City, right behind, or Weber City, right behind Food City, there's a soccer field down there. And by taking that route, which basically follows Little Moccasin Creek and Big Moccasin Creek, you could in fact create a walking pathway from connecting the Gate City sidewalk infrastructure with the Weber City sidewalk infrastructure and create quite a lengthy walking opportunity all the way to Franklin in connecting, if they complete the project, to Tennessee. And the Green Belt would be a long-term opportunity. The Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association is interested in it because it is probably the most historically significant piece of real estate in Scott County. Moccasin Gap was the first gap that the westward movement had to navigate to get from Tennessee, North Carolina, into Kentucky and the Midwest. There were three gaps. It was Moccasin Gap, Kane Gap, and Cumberland Gap. Cumberland Gap has recreated the walking trail. The association is currently working on a project to open up Kane Gap for a walking trail. And the third gap is of course Moccasin Gap. And Moccasin Gap is quite frankly, to my mind, the most important. Were it not for Moccasin Gap, nobody would ever have heard of Cumberland Gap because it took aligning the three gaps to get into Kentucky. And so you have the most historic spot down here. It used to obviously be a walking trail, but VDOT paid it. And it's going to be difficult, as VDOT tells us. We had a meeting with VDOT last week, a virtual meeting, and gave it to them and discussed it, and they of course said, gee, that's, that's a really good idea, but that's going to be tough to do. We need a plan. We need an engineering study. And we said, yes, we do. We need an engineering study to see feasibility of it. The engineering study is apparently $100,000, and Gate City doesn't have $100,000. But there are grants and opportunities. One that was just established by the state, by Commonwealth, was the Ready, Set, Go program to do that very thing. Unfortunately, Gate City nor Weber City qualify for that program because they're covered by the Kingsport Planning. So they looked at Kingsport Planning to do it. And Kingsport Planning, we learned, gets a grand total of $5,000 annually for that kind of work for Southwest Virginia Project. Little Wisco gets about $5,000 to do planning for you all as well, which is grossly insufficient to do the work. So there's kind of a catch 22 in trying to get this plan together. In any event, we got VDOT to say, we'll go back and try to find a way to do an engineering study. We think the plan is viable. We think it's something that would make a lot of sense. But we're going to have to find the funding to do, to do that engineering study. The good news is, I'm not asking you for money. All I need you to do, all we ask you to do, is one, endorse the project. Give us your blessing that Scott County, I have an endorsement from Gate City Town Council. I have one from Weber City Town Council, and I have one from the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail. We would like the county to give us a letter of endorsement. We would also like you to consider putting this pedestrian bike pathway in any of the planning documents that you have on your wish list or other things like Gate City is going to do and Weber City is going to do. Because as we learned, unless it's on one of those planning documents, VDOT isn't going to look at. We think we can do this. I think it'll take a long time. I think it'll take a lot of research and et cetera, et cetera. But it's not going to happen unless the county and the cities put it on their planning document and unless the cities and county endorse that as an idea. So that's why I'm here today to ask for a letter of endorsement. Any questions?
Would Kingsport eventually hook that to it, with the Green Belt, whether we come into that?
The plan that Jimmy showed us actually brings the Green Belt all the way into Weber City. But without some passageway through Moccasin Gap, you can't get to Gate City. You just can't.
I don't like the thing along 23, I mean, the painted line, I don't like that either.
It's probably the best they feel they can do. But honestly, that is not a safe route. It's just not safe. I don't know how they get across the bridge into Gate City. Do I, do I try to ride a bike across that? Are you kidding? I certainly would have a child on it, that's for sure.
To cross Big Moccasin Creek, would have to be a bridge, a pedestrian bridge or?
There probably have to be a pedestrian bridge across the creek somewhere in that stretch. Just ironically, to me, probably nobody else, that just struck me that, you know, this county only has one ABC store. It's in Moccasin Gap, and you have to drive to get there. I assume.
I personally have an issue with that.
Only so do people go to that, but I don't know if this seems odd. Anyway.
We'll put that down as been the issue. You can't walk the ABC store.
Maybe a bridge over to the ABC store, I don't know. Anything else? Thank you for your consideration.
If any comments or questions for Mr. Wilson?
I probably should have introduced myself as Pam Cox's husband and probably.
I made the connection, I made a lot of ideas.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, this letter of endorsement, a letter of support that he's asking for. I think it's an open letter to do that. I like trails. I like the Creeper Trail, I like the Green Belt. I'd use them, the one at Mindo, I haven't done yet, but I'm going to. Anyway, I love trails. So anyway, this letter, I think, would be something that we definitely should be a part of and encourage us to happen. So any comments or do we need a motion? Need a motion to do this letter of support?
I'll make the motion. We do the letter.
Mr. Brick has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is your technical second, any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. So get the letter and we'll get you down. Next item is out of nine, folks here from the Virginia Department of Health Program update. So as you come, please. Good morning. You're smiling this morning, it's good to see you.
Good morning, hi. My name is Teresa Slos. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Little Wisco and Cumberland Plateau Health Districts. And I have with me Michelle McFarren, their Nurse Manager Senior, and Daniel Henshoker, who's their Health Education Senior. And he's, we're here to present a program about our comprehensive harm reduction. And we met with your county administrator, Frieda Slarnes, a couple, a few weeks ago. And before I start our program and share a little bit about what we want to share with you today, I want to take this opportunity, first of all, to thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here, but thank you for your support through the COVID activities. I hate to say that word, the pandemic. It's almost a four-letter word, but we want to thank you for your support through all of that. You all were great community partners. The carport, I thank Frieda so many times for the carport that you all purchased for us. Our nurses and our clerical staff and our team that have worked in that, thank you so much. They stood out through the weather and did testing and vaccines and so much. And when that carport came, I'm sure you heard them doing hallelujahs and shouting and saying, thank you for that. And it meant more to them than words could express, that you all thought of them and chose to purchase that for them. And they thank you and we thank you for that, and that meant so much. So we just want to take that opportunity to say thank you for that. And we have utilized it a lot. We're getting ready to kick off our flu campaign, and so we're looking at goods and maybe drive-through events down the road, and I'm sure it will be used many more times. And so we just wanted to take that opportunity while we're here to say thank you for your continued support through the years and since we've had this opportunity to be with you and meet you face-to-face. But we're here today to share a little bit about our comprehensive harm reduction program. We were the first in the state to have that program in Little Wisco. We started it in our WIS office in July. I was thinking it was July of 2017, and my comrades here said it was 2018. But we started that program in 2018 in our WIS office. And it was a risk. It was a huge risk. It's controversial. And it was a challenge, but we were the first in the state. And Dr. Sue Kentrell, that you may know, was their director at that time, was really passionate about the program and saw the need. She was instrumental in seeing so many addicts and seeing the mental health issues and seeing the diseases that came from that addiction and seeing the services that were needed from that. And so she really saw the desire and the passion that needed to happen for that to come to our area for a harm reduction program. And candidly, when she mentioned that program, I've always supported her. I've been with VDH for 23 years and had always supported her. And I thought, oh, oh no, this is one time I'm not sure I can. And I'll share personally, I thought, what are we doing? Where is this program? And why this program? And we'll share a little bit about why this program and why we need to expand this program, why it was needed. And I prayed about it. And I said, Lord, show me. I've always supported it. Help me to understand. And God answered that prayer. And my pastor got up and he preached a sermon, and his sermon was about meeting people where they are. And public health is really mission work every day, and we're seeing that more and more with the clients we serve. It's not the clients that, when I started 23 years ago, it's not the same clients. They're more needy. Mental health issues, the services are different. Riskier services, family planning services, our children have needs. There's just greater needs, and we're seeing it more and more. So meeting people where they are, it's mission work. And so one of our missions is, in order to do the services, you have to kind of meet people where they are and to serve them where they are. And so the comprehensive harm reduction program has done just that. And it's, and Dan will share a lot more. He's kind of our coordinator for that, and Michelle. And they'll share one about how they've not only met people where they are in providing safety, keeping needles off the street, but it has expanded those services. And that's what we want to do here in Scott County, in Duffield, partnering with Revita. And so Daniel, you want to take over? And he's had some handouts for you. And share a little bit about what the program does, and then we'll answer any questions.
While he's giving you the handouts, I just wanted to take a minute and give you just a little bit of background on some of the chemical diseases that we were seeing in our district prior to starting down the path and thinking about the comprehensive harm reduction program. Most of you probably know that our region has seen high rates of hepatitis C for quite a while, especially since we've seen an increase in substance use disorders. But beginning in about 2012, in our district, in Little Wisco, which, you know, covers Scott, Lee, White, and Morton, we began to see an outbreak of hepatitis B in some of our communities. And so as we began to investigate those cases and kind of do the contact tracing and the follow-up with those, we just continued to find more and more and more cases. And what it really just boiled down to was, they were related to substance use disorders. And so that was kind of a wake-up call for us, I think, because we knew hepatitis C was a problem, but we really hadn't had that huge of a problem with hepatitis B before. But it wasn't long after that, that Scott County Indian had had the outbreak of HIV related to substance use disorders, you may have heard about that. And so it got us to thinking, you know, about, you know, that possibility, could that be a possibility as well? So we received some funding through NECA, which is a federal public health program, in about 2016, 17, to begin to do some activities around getting community input about substance use disorders and things that we need. We did a lot of town hall meetings. We did a tabletop exercise at Mountain Park College that a lot of our communities participated in. And so. And so out of that came the idea of the need for a comprehensive harm reduction program so that we could address how to try to make sure that we prevent the spread of those communicable diseases among this population, and also to provide some wraparound services just to improve their health in general and possibly connect them even with recovery services. So that's kind of the background of how it came about in Wise County, and I'll let Dan have his thoughts.
So the biggest thing with a comprehensive harm reduction program is, like Michelle said, a lot of wraparound services. Part of that is a syringe exchange program, and a lot of people hear syringe, needle, and that's where they stop. This is not a drug prevention program, it is a hepatitis C and HIV prevention program. And along the way, we are working with people in active addiction. We build a relationship with them, so when they reach the point in their life that they are ready to make a change, they have already developed a trustworthy connection, and they can come to us and they say, "I'm ready to get into treatment, how do I do that?" We have actually helped to facilitate getting people into treatment. We've taken people to centers, we've taken people and put them on airplanes to go to treatment before. You know, people come in and out of our program for a variety of reasons. We have some success stories and we have some very heartbreaking stories. We see people from all walks of life, people that probably fit the most horrible stereotype in your mind, and then people that, whose personal story will absolutely break your heart. We have one individual who came to the program whose mother started shooting him up when they were 11 years old, and they did not have a chance of escaping the frozen addiction. And it's really people like that that we want to work with and provide as many opportunities as we can for. You know, there's nobody out there waiting for a clean syringe in order to inject. If you're addicted and you inject drugs, you're going to inject whether or not there's a clean syringe available. Used syringes, dirty syringes, found syringes. People will take the tube and point out of a ballpoint pen and even attempt to shoot up with that sometimes. And that can cause a lot of damage to their skin, their blood vessels. It can cause a lot more medical issues and put a lot more financial burden on the area as well. This is about making sure that, you know, if someone does this, they're going to do it as safely as possible. Safe for them, and as Risa said, safe for the community as well. We pride ourselves on our program, keeping it very clinical. We have a 96% return rate on the syringes that we send out. So that's syringes that are potentially infected with HIV and Hep C coming back to the program, that are not on the street, that are not waiting for someone to get stuck by, that are not putting your police officers at risk from getting stuck because they are coming back into the program and being safely disposed of. So I understand there were some questions, I'd be happy to answer those, and if I can, I will find the answer and get back to you, so.
I will just say that our harm reduction program in Wise County operates out of our Health Department. That's just the way it was set up, which we like that setup because it gives us an opportunity to provide some other medical services and things to the clients while they're there. Also, out of this program, we were able to determine a need for hepatitis C treatment, and we partnered with the University of Virginia to train our nurse practitioners to be able to treat people who've actually had hepatitis C so that, so another way that we're helping to prevent the spread of that disease within the community. In Scott County, we've been in conversations with a recovery program in Duffield, Revita, and the idea is that we will partner with them to provide this program, hopefully, starting in January, if we receive funding through the state, which we've applied for. And our location would be our mobile unit that we would set up aside with Revita. We were considering operating out of the Health Department in Scott County because we felt like we had such a good partner and a good kind of in there with the Revita program in Duffield. And also, it would be a way for us, where, if we were located there in Duffield, we could also be a little bit closer to serving individuals in Lee County as well. So that was our idea for expanding the harm, the harm reduction program in Scott County.
Funding from the program does come from state and federal level, as well as independent grants that we apply for. We do not use any locality funding to fund this program at all.
Do you have a success rate for Wise, for people going into treatment to get off of the phone?
We do not, simply because we don't always know why people leave the program. We do have people who know have gotten clean and are staying clean. It could simply be they went to jail. We do see a little bit of a transient population, so they may come to the program a few times and then move on, and we may not see them again. So unfortunately, that's not something we're tracked because we don't always know why they stop coming into the program.
We do have a peer recovery specialist that works in the program in Wise and that we also put in the budget for Scott County, that, that's what their focus is. They talk to every single person that comes into the harm reduction program about recovery and about what options are available and about where are, where are you at right now and considering, you know, recovery? So that is part of our program, is to talk to people about recovery. They, this person is not only available during clinic hours, but he's available after hours as well if they want to communicate or need somebody to talk to that's been in their shoes. So that's a really important part of the program as well.
Yeah, I understand. I understand in the health industry why there are not statistics like abortion. I've heard people quote, "Statistics," which there aren't, because providers are not, by law, do not have to give that information. So that is one thing, it's not known either, and this is, you know, similar, I mean, it's a health area, so I understand you're not having...
And people go in and out of recovery too, and that makes it, I think, a little harder to track. You know, they might start recovery and then they're out, then they're back in, so it's a little bit hard of a statistic to kind of track. But we know how important it is, and really that's, you know, our two main goals are to help prevent the spread of communicable disease, and then we want to be a connection for people to get into recovery when they're ready.
Is this going to happen in the county? Is there something we need to do, or here's the board, I mean?
So initially, when the harm reduction program began in Wise, the process was that we did have to get permission from local government, from law enforcement. The law changed, I don't know what year that was, so now the...
It's a little bit of a pain, yeah.
Yeah, so now we no longer have to get permission, but we do want to get your support. We do want, you know, to ask for your support with this program. We want to be available to answer any questions that you might have. We realize there can be concerns. We do want to let you know that our participants have to sign an agreement form. They are educated the very first visit about what is required of them as far as conduct and behavior, how they can be dismissed from the program if they don't cooperate with those rules that are outlined. And also, we are required to have a safety plan that we submit with our application to the state as well. So we, we realize that this is a new, kind of a newer concept and that there are a lot of questions and concerns. So we do ask for your support, but we also realize you may have some hesitations and some questions. And we wanted to be here today to try to answer any questions you might have or hear your concerns.
That was, as she said, you know, it's not required that you all had, had to do anything, to sign anything, to give us the approval to do it anymore. But out of respect and because you are our community partners and have supported us for so long, we didn't want to do anything without coming to you before it started or, and just do it. And then, and you all hear that we've done it without sharing with you and coming before you and offering the opportunity to ask questions and discuss it and those kind of things. We wanted to be upfront and not be...
And you have been, yeah. Has the Wise County Board of Supervisors approved this today?
Oh, they did.
Yes.
We had, that was one of the things, before we started the program in 2018, we went to Dr. Cantrell and us, we went to the town council, the Wise County Board of Supervisors, the county attorney, the sheriff's department, there was a...
The town board.
Yeah, there was a huge group. We had to actually have their approval because the law at that time, you could not implement the program without their approval. So we had to actually have written approval and all that at that point in time, and yes, we had that before we started the program.
But you wouldn't have to have it from us to do that in the county?
The law doesn't require that at all.
I'll be honest with you, I don't, I think the folks in our county probably would, would not show a lot of sympathy for people that are doing that. I can see where a needle exchange program, when you see these horror stories, needles on the streets, I don't see it here, but you see it in other parts of the country where you're seeing that, and it's horrible. The kids finding needles and stuff. I can see the benefit from having that, but I don't know if the local folks here in this county would ever have any sympathy or, you know, if they do something like that, it's on them, if they, you know, if they use a dirty needle, then... So the board here, they can, y'all's thoughts on it, I don't know, but...
I can tell you that the litter control folks in Wise County and the people around there that have seen the program and seen its success speak positively of it because it, there's less needles that they find, less things, it's keeping it off the street. Our program is one for one.
Oh, I don't know, yeah.
And when they enroll in the program, they get, I think, 30 needles.
We start, if they don't bring any, so we do a maximum of 30 syringes per week. If they don't bring any syringes, again, they get a starter pack of 10 syringes, and they can build up from there. So it's a one for one, so if they only bring us 10 in, they only get 10 back.
And before we implemented the program in Wise County, we had the opportunity to travel to Charleston, West Virginia. You may have heard some things about some of their, was it Charleston?
Yeah.
Okay. Huntington, Huntington. And we got to observe their program there. And a lot of what we took away from our visit actually were things that we didn't want our program to look like. Programs that don't require that one-to-one exchange where they, you know, it doesn't matter if they bring them back in and they just give out syringes, has more likelihood of seeing more syringes in the community than a program that requires those to be returned. And so we knew that that was very important, and that was one thing we made sure that we wrote into our program.
And a little aspect of it, of where we do the program, where, you know, we counsel with them about the HIV and try to get them into other programs, and also, you know, if it's a female and male, get them into other programs like family planning, because if someone's a drug addict, you don't want that person pregnant. And there's other programs that you want them enrolled in, and so, you know, we do try to do it from a clinical perspective and...
So we didn't want people to be able to just walk in, exchange needles either. We wanted them to be, to receive counseling and to receive health services and...
Try to keep it healthy.
Well, it would help if you track them too.
Regular testing, so.
Your thoughts, you're on the board.
I'm just wondering, are needles or syringes considered controlled, paraffinated?
They are, but if you have, in Virginia, there was a law passed where if you're using those as part of a harm reduction program...
So if they have this card, it's legal to carry the needle?
It is, but it is.
Our agreements, and this is the way we phrase it to law enforcement, when the syringes leave the program, they're in a baggie. When they come back to the program, we provide a sharps container. The syringes are in the sharps container. If the syringes are not in the sharps container that we provide, they are open game for law enforcement and for prosecution.
So as long as they keep them in the container?
Correct.
They're legal, if they're, if they're in this program?
If they're laying out on the seat or they're anywhere else, they're fair game for the law enforcement.
So it's, provided this, it's making it, there's no reason to have the syringe if there's not drugs involved, correct?
Correct. I mean, we do all...
So if they've got, if you're given a permission to have the syringe, you know they're going to, they're going to have...
They're going to use regardless of whether they have a clean syringe or not, so.
So aren't you helping them?
They're going to use regardless of whether or not they have this clean syringe. So the clean syringe is preventing hepatitis C and HIV, preventing law enforcement officers from getting needle sticks, preventing them from tossing that needle out and potentially getting it there. They're going to use and inject whether or not they have this clean syringe, that's, it's not...
Well, I tried to come with, you know, with an open mind.
And it's not that we're saying to them that it's okay for you to use drugs, that's, you know, that's not our message either. Our message to them is that, you know, the whole purpose of the program is just to help to prevent the spread of the communicable diseases and to try to get them into services. So it's not a way of saying we think this is a good behavior or that this is good for your health or good for our community, but what can we do to reduce some of the risk to our community because they are going to use whether they have a clean syringe or not?
Provided in your packet, the last four pages are some rates of acute hepatitis B and hepatitis C for the district. And when you look at those rates, fortunately, the state rate's not on there, but we are about five times higher than the state rate for Hep B and Hep C in the district.
And here's the other part, you know, if there's children around those, and I get where you're coming from because that's kind of where I was when this first started back in 18, and I get where you're coming from. If there's a child that, you know, like Dan was talking about, we provide the sharps container because they know if they bring a dirty syringe into us, a used one, because they're going to use it anyway, and they are using it. But if they put that in that sharps container to bring it back to us, they're going to get a clean one. Whereas if they're not doing that, and there's a child in that home, or a child in that car, and they just throw that anywhere, and that kid picks up that needle. Or I, you know, if I'm riding in that car and I'm in a bystander or whatever, and I'm in that home, someone is in that home, or in that car, or wherever with them, or they just throw it out the window, and they have hepatitis C or HIV, and they've touched that needle, guess what? They're exposed. Whereas in our program, by putting that needle in that sharps container, knowing that when they come back to our program, they bring those dirty syringes back to us because they're using anyway. If they're a user, they're a user. If they'll keep it in that sharps container that we provide, they're going to get a clean one, then that's an element of safety. Then unless someone's getting into that sharps container and taking it out, you're hopefully protecting a child or someone else from just picking it up on the sidewalk or a playground or wherever they may toss it, in a home, laying it on the table, you know, a user doesn't care. Whereas in the program, if they keep it in that sharps container, which is legal, and they bring it back, they know if they bring it us back 10 or 20 or 30 dirty needles, we're going to give them that many clean ones. That's keeping it from laying around somewhere, potentially infecting someone else.
Back in 2012 and 2014, when we were seeing the hepatitis B outbreak, we were trying to set up in communities to have people to come to us for testing, and nobody would come. So what we ended up having to do was actually just kind of go door to door and doing some of this contact tracing and doing some testing right there in the homes. And that's when our nurses would see, you know, what was actually going on with their own two eyes, with these dirty syringes in the homes with, sometimes with children or sometimes not, or, you know, and the individuals just sharing these syringes, and then they develop things like skin infections and even heart infections, and then, of course, like hepatitis C and B and those kinds of things. And that's kind of what led us down, down the path towards the harm reduction program.
Hepatitis C can live inside of a syringe for up to three months, so. It has a very long infection period. And Michelle talked a little bit about Scott County, Indiana. That county is very similar to much of our district, they're very rural. A lot of their income was heavily based around coal mining. Coal mining dried up, a lot of poverty set in, injection drug use came to that community. They ended up having a lot of injection drug use. A person brought HIV into this community where there was no syringe exchange, and there was a lot of needle sharing. One person, they traced it back to 210 people in this county ended up with HIV as a result of injection drug sharing. So if you think about what 210 cases of HIV would do to Scott County, Virginia, as far as the healthcare needs, the specialty needs, medical needs, that's a very significant issue to consider.
And your children, you know, they'll pick up anything. They don't think, you know, we're always supervised, and they'll pick it up. So if it's in a container, hopefully, that keeps them from picking it up and becoming infected.
So how do participants learn about your program?
That was, you know, when we first started the program in 2018, some of the clients, we kind of knew them from some of our other services, they'd come in for SDH testing. And we didn't advertise, we kind of did a soft opening. In other words, we had one, I think, our first, we had one client come in, and we shared with that client, we were, we had a comprehensive harm program when we were doing the needle exchange. And that client, we provided syringes, did the counseling, and they spread the word themselves to each other. And after that individual left us and we saw how we, the program worked and the services they were provided, and that they weren't arrested, if they did what they were supposed to do, then I think the next time they came in, there was three, then five, and then it grew to the numbers you have up there. We don't advertise, we don't have to.
We also do some outreach to doctors' offices when they encounter patients, then they... they see that are injecting. Um, the doctors can refer them to the program as well.
It's real. Program, I mean, it's, it's out there. They're, they're using and, um, it's word of mouth amongst them. It's, uh-
I just, I'll be honest, I just have a really hard time saying okay to a, to drug use, period.
It's, it's-
And, and I know that it does happen. I know that. I realize that. And I'm sure it goes on throughout the county, but, oh my goodness.
More than we know.
And I'm sure about that. And I'm sure, but I'm sure our officer back here, I mean, I'm sure he's seen firsthand the issues we've, that we're facing that, you know, that this board does not see. You know, we're not gonna see things like, like that or, or what, for what you see, but...
We also took the opportunity to meet with, um, the sheriff's office here in Scott County.
And that was gonna be my next question. Have you met with the sheriff?
We met with them before we met with Frida, actually. And, um, they were very supportive, actually, because they see it firsthand and they see-
And that was gonna be my question. What was their-
They were very supportive.
What was their reaction?
They, they were very much in support because they see it firsthand.
Oh, I've, I've got, it must, might be a silly question, but I wanna ask you. I, I come to you, I get the, the needles, the, I, I use needles, and I'm out driving and I run a red light. Policeman stops me and you advise them directly to tell the police that they, they've got a card they show them.
Yes.
And say, "I've got needles in the car." Well, they stopped me for traffic violation. I know there's needles in the car. Do I look for drugs?
That's, that's really a question for law enforcement.
That's the prerogative of law enforcement.
So they could?
Yes.
So I'm not gonna tell them I've got a card, I've got drugs, uh, a needle, I'm just gonna-
Well, if, I'm sure if the police officer sees needles spread out, I mean-
He's gonna check it.
Yeah.
I'm curious about that.
Well, I personally think it's a good program. However, I don't think the people I represent would go along with it because the facility in that field, there, I got some negative feedback on that when I was campaigning.
So we had, you know, initially when we started in Wise County, a lot of the same express sentiment. I can tell you that I do think we've gained the trust of a lot of the community over the years as, as they've seen the integrity with which that we run the program and when we can share some statistics of some of the things that we've done and with the decline in, um, you know, the disease spread. And also, one thing we haven't mentioned as part of our program is, um, training clients about using Narcan for overdoses. So there, there've been a lot of overdoses prevented and, and a lot of, you know, um, things that we've been able to incorporate into the program that they have really gained the trust and mind of the community. So we hope over time, um, that as the community sees the integrity with which we run the program and, and if they can see some of the benefits of the program, that, that people would be more supportive of it.
The key, the key thing is, you know, we're not enabling because we're, they're already using. They already have, they're getting needles, they're just sharing them. They're using dirty needles or they're using pens or whatever and they're not responsible with those. They're, they're throwing them, they're doing those kind of things. So the, the pro, you know, they're already using. They're already addicts. Um, the program, the goal of the program is to keep our community safe, keep the spread of the disease from growing and to hopefully get, get the individuals clean, meaning get them in a program to get them, like our peer recovery specialist who is a recovered addict for, for several years now, is to get them in a program to, to, to be recovered so they can be a recovered addict, be a productive member of society.
Well, one problem that one man expressed to me was the people coming into his community there.
They're already there.
They're there and actually they're-
They are there.
They're here and you may not even, some of them don't always look looking at it.
You will be surprised at the people who come into the program.
Yeah. They're already shopping in the grocery stores and, uh-
We, we even see people who, who work full-time.
Yes.
You'd be surprised at some of the clients that are in the program. It's, they don't always fit your stereotypical, what you think of it as-
They could, they could look like us today and, and, and you not know it. And that's, that's the other part of it is they're sitting in your, they're sitting in offices, they're, they could be working right alongside you and you not know it. And, and we don't disclose that, of course, of course, but they're, they're there already.
Well, will they be coming here to get the needles, to be able to be downstairs?
No, no, no. They're in, they will be, um, at the Duffield, the Revita Clinic, that's already there, and our mobile clinic. We would just park there in the parking lot and, and take referrals.
Or some of the clients that already travel to the Wise program may want to come down there because it's closer and that kind of-
Closer, instead of having to travel to Wise.
The Wise program serves not only clients from Wise County, but clients from surrounding counties.
Scottland. Yeah, we've been serving Lee, Scott County City, even though it's based in Wise.
Have you done this in Lee County?
We don't, we don't have a program located in Lee County yet.
I'm here from this side.
From what everybody say, you know, I can see both sides. You know, I mean, there's pros and cons to both, both, both sides, but, you know, I, I think we're dealing with two, maybe even three different types of people, users. You know, you've got users that feel like that they can make a change and that's good. But you're gonna have users that are abusers and who will abuse, uh, maybe the program. Uh, you know, that's, that's the ones that I'm concerned about. Uh, you know, the ones that are already have figured, you know, this is a way to keep syringes and, you know, I, you know, what I'm trying to, just two, two or maybe even three different types of people.
I thought about that too when they changed the paraphernalia law.
Mm-hmm.
What I did in reaction to that. So our program, like I said, is very clinical and part of that, you know, is based on regular contact with the person. Uh, I didn't like the idea of them coming one time, getting the card and then never coming again and, you know, not getting the testing, not getting the counseling, not getting that. So our ID cards have an expiration date on there, which means they come into the program every three months at minimum. So they do get tested every three months, uh, they do get the counseling, so they do have an incentive to come back. And if they're caught with an expired ID card, again, that's fair game, everything.
But the only, the only true, well, I, I mean, except for the ones that truly wanna be clean.
And it's, it is tricky because like you said-
Uh, you know, the one, I mean, I, I farm for a living, you know, I can buy, I can buy a box of syringes, you know, I mean, hundreds of them if I wanted to. Uh, but, uh, it's, it's just those, those ones that, that would abuse it and would put our law enforcement in jeopardy. Uh, of course, I'm sure they have protocols that they, uh, treat everybody as if they've got something, I guess, but, but I don't know, I, I, I sort of have mixed, mixed feelings.
It's, it's a different way of thinking and I started my career actually working with frontier health, so I was on the mental health treatment side of things. Uh, I worked there for ten years and I've been at the health department for six years now. So it was, it was a way of, of having to change my own thinking as well because, you know, it was all abstinence, twelve step groups, that type of thing. Uh, it's a little bit different when you're working with people in active addiction, like you said, who may not be at that, that mental point yet, um, you know, realizing they even need to make a change. So you, you grab, Susan, right.
I, I just, you know, I, I was actually thinking this morning watching TV. I remember when I was just little, you know, there'd be commercials on there, you know, about the eggs frying and your brain and all that. You know, you don't see that stuff anymore. You don't-
Sad we're having this conversation.
You don't, you don't, you don't see that, that preventative measures that, that would may help stop somebody from doing that in the first place. Uh, you know, and that, uh, but anyway.
We did some other programs, um, in the schools. We have one really great program, um, that we work with seventh grade students. It's not really focused on drugs, but the whole idea of the program is to get them to thinking about what they want for their future and what a positive future would look like. Um, so they know that, uh, when they make certain decisions, those can have consequences that might prevent them from achieving what they want to achieve in the future. So there are some things like that that we are doing in school. And again, they're not detailed and specific regarding, you know, substance use or even, you know, um, uh, abstinence and things like that. But we want them to think about what it takes to become a successful, prosperous person in their community and what things can kind of derail that. And, um, so, so in, in prevention, we do some things like that in schools.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you ever see the book, Dope Sick or read the book, Dope Sick? There's a movie-
I've read it.
Uh, Beth Massey talks a lot about this area and Dr. Cantrell is mentioned in that book. She collaborated with that book and focuses a lot on this area. The reason I mention that is, you know, when we talk about the drug addiction problem, um, Beth Massey wrote Factory Man. She wrote about the Burlington area and she does a lot of, um, research and so her, she's pretty accurate. But in Dope Sick, um, it talks about, you know, the, the pharmaceutical companies targeted area because of coal mining and back pain and those kind of things. And they, they targeted doctors and they wind and dine them and, uh, to write prescriptions. And people became addicted to pain medication and pain medication led to other things and it increased and it increased. And so they wrote more prescriptions and wrote more prescriptions and wrote more prescriptions. And I'm sure you kept up with the pharmaceutical company that just paid millions of dollars out because of one of those lawsuits.
Yeah.
Um, some of the individuals that we see in this program that are educated and working individuals who still work and have jobs that you'd be very surprised are products of some of that. And so, you know, I don't think anybody ever makes the choice to be an addict. I don't think you wake up, just like that eleven, you know, you don't wake up and say, "I, I'm gonna be a drug addict today. Um, I think I'm gonna be addicted today." I think it happens, you know, for whatever reasons and, and it can be a loss of a job, a loss of, it can be a medical problem, it can be divorce, mental health. We see a lot through this program.
They're making bad choices and bad decisions.
Over and over and-
But-
But the key is, you know, one of the things is, as I said in my opening statement, and, and I'll step out on a limb a little bit here. As a Christian, I really struggled. When I first started, when we first started this, candidly, I really struggled. I, I took that, were enabling, is what I thought. And I prayed, I prayed really hard. I, I was really struggling. I thought, am I gonna have to step away from public health? Because I had always supported everything we did and I thought, man. But I thought, what better way to make a difference in someone's life? If we can save a life, if we can make a difference in our community and keep these dirty needles off the street, keep a child from picking up a dirty needle and getting hepatitis C or HIV, or change one person's life, that they're no longer a drug addict, or they no longer, they don't overdose and die, that we change their life, that we save that life and make a difference. And that's worth it. Mission work every day. And I, 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 I struggled. I'm a community member too and I live not too far from our Wise County Health Department. So I, I get where you're coming from. I, I get it. But they're doing it and maybe we're that middle ground intervention that can be the link. And that's what our desire is, is through the, and we take it from a clinical approach to change and be that change, to share with them what you're doing is destructive. You abide by our program, we'll give you this card, here's the Sharps container. If you don't play by the rules, then our law enforcement can do and will do this. We can, you come back in every three months, you bring a one-to-one, we can refer you for Hep C, HIV, if you're ready for treatment, family planning, try to get them to programs. You know, here, we take it from a very clinical approach, but at the same time, we have a peer recovery specialist who, I can't talk to them about drug addiction because I haven't walked that road, but he can. And he was very successful, hard to becoming a drug addict. He, he was very successful and he's now working full-time and he's successful now. But he went through a transition time when he went, so he can tell them what it's like. He can identify with what it's like to not be there. I, I can't. So he's that one. And so that's the whole role with this and so that's what we want to do. And that's, you know, that's been the success of the program. And I, I think that's why the community has embraced it so well in, in Wise County and our law enforcement are very supportive. I go to church with a lot of them and they, they have been very supportive in Wise County because we've seen the success of it. And when we met with the, the Scott County, uh, our sheriff, Sheriff Pete and, um, Mr. Starnes, Deputy Starnes, um, they were very supportive because they see the consequences. They see, they, they arrest and they see a lot of this. Um, I, I, we, we want you just to think about it, absorb it a little bit. I'm gonna ask you to pray about it. For those of you who pray, think about it. Take it into heart. Um, it is mission work. I will tell you, public health is mission work every day. And that's what I tell my staff, that's what I tell them every day. You have to have a servant's heart. Be sure don't go into it for the salary. Um, it's, you have to have a servant's heart.
Yeah, what really struck in my mind was what you said. You listen to a sermon and what your pastor said, you have to meet them, you know, where they're, where they're at.
You did.
Um, you know, I'm a pastor too and, um, before a person can realize that they need to be saved, they need to realize, realize that they're lost first. And so this, I, I really appreciate y'all's passion about what you're doing and, uh, sharing with us the struggles that you had, even with your faith of even, um, doing this, but it's worth it if just one person is saved. Uh, I guess the problem that most here would have with it is just with, um, in supporting, we feel like that we're encouraging it and we're really not encouraging it from what I'm understanding.
Yeah.
Um, I think you've, you know, you've done the right steps. You've talked with the sheriff's department and talking with the towns and talking with the county and it, it, it is a big problem in all of our community. Um, and I'm sure everyone sitting here, they know people with this, very close to where they live at, that, that are indulged in these problems and you don't know how to reach them. Um, but I'm glad to see something here, the Comprehensive Harm Reduction Program. There's a lot of harm that's being done to individual lives and innocent lives, just and you should, all of you, Sharon, you have, have a great passion about that. I respect that. And I would agree that maybe this is a decision we don't need to make today, but we need to really seriously think about it. Um, and that gives us time to communicate with the sheriff and that sort of thing too, you know, and, uh, not to say that you, uh, that you've said anything wrong because I believe if you said he supports, you know, he supports, but that gives us time to think about it too and absorb it. And I respect that because you're not here trying to push it on us. You're just trying to do something to, as the thing goes, to pull the, be down with the fire.
I, I think it's a good idea where you take the bad syringes back because that's getting them off the street or whatever. Because a lot of these drugs, if you just touch one of those syringes, you'll overdose and hit the ground. I know some police officers that just looked at evidence and they touched it and they hit the ground and almost killed them. So if you're getting these syringes, dirty syringes out of reach of people, I might walk by and just see one man pick it up. Next thing I know, I'm on the ground, don't even know what's happening.
That's right.
I don't know how they take these drugs, but I know this fentanyl and stuff, it's awful. You've just gotta touch it and you overdose just like that. And I think it's a good idea that you're switching them out one-to-one, uh, but hopefully- And I think it's a good idea that you're switching them out one-to-one, but hopefully they will figure out what they're doing to their self. I mean, you can look at them, Autumn's teeth rotted out, they've got sores all over them and stuff like that and it's really a bad thing and it's getting worse all the time. It's not getting better.
Well, and sadly, there's not a lot of resources for like long-term inpatient programs and things like that. And that's the other thing in our area is really lacking in. But all we can do is, is do it one step at a time and do what we can do and, you know, and advocate for, for the rest of the services that are needed to, to help these people. But...
One of our biggest barriers to getting people into recovery is the very lack of thing that Michelle mentioned, a long-term treatment facility or even a sober living community. People say, you know, "I know what I'm doing is fad, I want to change," but they don't have the resources to do it. If they go to treatment, they get themselves clean, they don't have the money to change their living situation. So they come back, their family uses, their friends use, and they go, "I would be right back in with it." So why put in the work and the effort if all I'm going to see when I come back is that very thing and know that I'm going to fail in my recovery? It's very hard.
Well, they're isolated, that's the only friends they have because they, their family has, you know, they don't really think that it is anymore. The only friends they had were their other users and so now they've recovered and they don't have anybody and, and people don't trust that they're truly recovered. So they're right back in, you know, and it's really, it's a struggle.
And I'll, I'll take that. Kind of you said, you know, we've talked about meeting people where they are, where the core tenets of harm reduction is, we meet people where they are, but we don't leave them there. So that's, that's kind of a follow-up stamp. We're going to meet you where you're at, but we're not going to leave you where you're at.
We've got a lot of discussion here, we can take it up. I don't want to do anything to, to stop the program, but as far as supporting and hear a vote, I don't think we need to do that. If you all want to, we will, it's up to the board, but just leave it as it is, if it's going to happen either way. I don't think that would be perceived out in the community. You probably, if you put it out there, you'd probably get a lot of support because there's not a lot of sympathy for people that, that are drug addicts. My dad's an alcoholic and I, and he's been dead for a long time, but I've never felt sorry for him, I've seen what he went through. I know what our family went through because of addiction. And so anyway, I don't know how much community support we would give on a needle exchange program here in the county, located in Duffield, where I live, another end of the county, it's 30 miles. I don't think people would drive to exchange needles, I don't think they'd drive that far to do it. And ones that I may know or may not know don't have the resources to even get down there. So anyway, I don't think we should do anything here to keep it from happening, I'm not so sure we should do anything to promote it. But, you know, your thoughts here, should we, should we not? That's my, my thoughts. Don't do anything. Thoughts, Will?
Anytime you're interested, you know, I'd be happy to come and provide.
I will do talk to the sheriff to get their feedback. I believe what you said, but I would like to...
We'd like to also extend the invitation if any of you would like to visit our harm reduction program in Wise County, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you. And thanks to anyone here, I'll stop time, just one, one person.
Well, I've shared my thoughts and Darrell has and several you have. I think from my perspective, you know, it gives us time to talk with the sheriff and, you know, his folks and gives us time to digest and think about it, you know, more based on what you all have shared with us. All three of you have been very passionate.
Excellent presentation, everybody.
We do appreciate you.
And it's, it's really a big problem and you're so right from what you said you heard from your pastor, you have to meet them where they are. And we have to get around this little problem that maybe we think that we're encouraging it. You probably think that from the get-go, that's what Mike, you were sharing and Stephanie and, but what you've shared with us is, they're doing it already and they are. And so if you have it in the community, you know, what can we do to, to help? You'd probably ask yourself that a thousand times over. And, and when you say or you try to do anything, you know, you can't stop it. They have to have the right help. So at least you have some glimmer of hope, you know, through a program, you know, like what you have. I think we should at least think about it. Take that for our next weekend and a good time.
Well, I wanted to say, the location, like Mr. Mann and Chairman Mann was saying, it, a lot of people in Scott County may not go to Duffield. It may be a facility for more for Lee County with it being in Duffield than for Scott.
The Ravina Clinic's there and so they serve both Lee and Scott and so that's why...
So they do have Scott County people too.
We have Scott County people that drive to Wise.
We do, we have people in County people that come to Wise, people from Russell County. I mean, you'd be surprised and a lot of them don't have transportation, but they get Russell's other people.
Well, I guess there's a perception, you know, that we have to, to deal with, you know, it's like the pain management, you know, clinics and things like that. And people get hooked on, you know, some different drugs there that are more harmful to their bodies and it's really helping them. But here, this seems like from you guys' perspective, there's some glimmer of hope, you know, helping and trying to keep things safe. And what's a big plus with me is, is how the sheriff and how, how his folks feel about that, so.
And then do talk to Sheriff Feeds.
Let me give you what if, I'm the user. My good friend Sally's going to Duffield, can she do mine for me, do I show it to her person, could she do it for me?
We don't allow third-party exchanges, you have to show it to the person with your own stuff.
All right. I thought so, I want to be sure.
Like I said, it's, we're really big on the whole, wraparound of services and if you're not coming into the program and not doing what you're supposed to do, then you're not taking benefit from the way these services are designed to be.
That's another thing we saw in the West Virginia program, they were allowing people to come in and get forever how many people. It wasn't long till that program had to shut down, but we saw a lot of things through that program that we thought, no, we are not doing our program that way.
I can't take 50 to Michelle, 50 to them.
Okay. All right. Good presentation.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank you all for your continued support through the years. We really appreciate you all.
Excellent presentation really was. And what you all have done here today has enlightened me a lot and I'm sure the others too, very informational and educational too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Take a 10-minute break.
Yes.
Even where they are and get more to tap there.
Absolutely.
Communication and Information Administration grant for Scott County telephone that will provide middle mile broadband infrastructure in the county. So just need to ratify the letter of support.
I'm sure you've seen it on your email and like I said, the majority supported that so we'll go ahead and put it to a vote here. Need a motion to support this letter of support for Scott County telephone.
So moved.
All right, Ms. Agnew made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. And item 10B, Ms. Arns.
This is to establish a lease threshold for right to use at the $10,000 level. This is a new requirement for GASB-87 that we have to do. All of our leases have to be reviewed and reported. Like I said, new audit requirement this year. And if we set that limit at $10,000, that will save us money from having to have all of the leases audited. That would be below that $10,000 level. And that recommendation was made by CPA firm that we look at a $10,000 to $12,000 threshold. So we're going to try to set that at 10 on your all's approval.
All right. So need a motion to approve this at $10,000, that threshold on that. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 11. This is on the American Rescue Plan Act project. The committee has approved this so Ms. Arns would again go into detail.
Let me switch over to the place. We've received quotes to replace the Breebo door system. Ours is out of date. If something happened with our doors, we wouldn't have immediate access to shut those down in case of emergency. So this would upgrade our door system. We are looking at doing $7,456.84 with ARPA funding. And the yearly subscription fee is $4,636.80 and that amount would be paid through the yearly budget. But today's approval would be for $7,456.84 from ARPA to pay for the equipment. And we do get to trade in our old boards so that saved us some money on the equipment cost.
And the door system being where?
It's all county buildings.
All county, okay. All right.
That has the electronic door system. So here, the courthouse, sheriff's office, Crypt Road in Duffield.
Okay. All righty.
911.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve this amount?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the item 12 of ACO Annual Conference Meeting will be in Richmond then in November. And Mr. Bricky and I have decided to go and we need a, to vote, we need one of us to be able to vote. Want us to write correct the terminology for it?
Right, correct.
Box.
Yeah.
One as a voting member and one as an alternate.
Okay. So y'all can select between me and Mr. Bricky. How do you want to do that?
I want to make Danny the lead person.
I think you can. I've done it before so I don't mind if you accept the board calling to do that. He'll be the alternate. I don't mind at all. So if they have a motion.
I'll make the motion to nominate Mr. Mann as the voting.
Okay, and Mr. Bricky as the alternate?
And Mr. Bricky as the alternate.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
All right. You know, it's so kind. Mr. Tipton's second.
Yeah.
All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the Black Gun Water Emergency Ending Resolution. I'm glad we're at this point.
Hallelujah.
Huh?
Hallelujah.
Yeah. And I was talking to Darrell earlier about this. It seemed like forever getting that project done. They promised water in April. But there's so many issues, supply issues and getting the right components. When I sent out the video, somebody posted of the water running in their sink and they were saying the braises because they got water up there. Ms. Hood has really been a huge part of this, getting this done. It's all of us have when we did that emergency, we did declared a local emergency back in 2020 and got them. We was always talking to Darrell about it. Actually, it's really quick to get it funded and get it put in in a little over two years. It's really fast for any water project. Darrell and Marshall both are on the PSA and you all know how hard it is to get a project done. It seemed like forever for those people. If you've got water a day, it's forever.
Yes.
They went over 1,000 days without water. And so anyway, to get this done, get it approved, the funding come quickly but getting it put in took a little bit longer. So anyway, I'm just so glad. So that ending resolution, if you, Ms. Arns, you want to address anything on that, you need to.
I think that would be Ms. Keighley.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Keighley.
I drafted a resolution for you all to consider. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. All righty. This is a good resolution. Anyway, we need a motion to approve this ending resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, so second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So anyway, that is good. Next item is item 14. It's ARC, Contract Agreement, which is Appalachian Regional Commission, I think is what that acronym stands for. Just on the Upper Cliff Mountain Grant Agreement to get it up and going. Ms. Arns, you want to address that any further than that?
The grant agreement is on your tablet and I also emailed it out and got majority vote back to approve in advance of today's meeting. The grant agreement is between Appalachian Regional Commission and Scott County. Department of Housing and Community Development will be overseeing the grants for Upper Cliff Mountain Phase II water project.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make my motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Bricky's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is to ratify the signing of the Phalen Hollow Grant Agreement, Ms. Arns.
I believe that's on your tablet as well. This grant agreement would be between the Board of Supervisors and DHCD for CDBG funds for the Phalen Hollow Water Project. And Little Wisco will be overseeing that project for us.
All right. All righty, need a motion on this grant agreement also. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 15B, Ms. Arns.
This is for authority to sign an interagency agreement between Scott County and Scott County PSA for the Phalen Hollow Water Project. I believe that is in your extra packets. It is.
Yes.
Basically just says that the county will receive the CDBG funds from Department of Housing and Community Development and pass those to PSA who will oversee the project.
The amount's $110,000, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, do we have a motion on this agreement with PSA?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is bookkeeping. Ms. Lickers.
Please appropriate $1,768.10 to Sheriff's Office for repairing maintenance of vehicles 312-0056-009 for an insurance claim received in positive treasurer's office. And that's all of the appropriations.
All right, do we have a motion on the appropriations that are described by Ms. Lickers?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Ms. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is transfers. Ms. Lickers.
Please transfer $4,240.37 from Capital Projects Munis Software 95030-8022 to Information Systems Capital Outlay 12540-8105.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the transfers?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is our county attorney, Ms. Keighley. Have anything? We got your office that you've been involved in. Do you have anything outstanding?
No, I don't.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Ms. Keighley? Thank you, ma'am, for what you did. Next item is for our county administrator. So, Ms. Arns.
General fund balance after claims is $3,165,672. As you can tell on your comparison chart, we're just probably 160,000, 170,000 below where we were this time last year. As far as claims for the month, early claims totaled 300, early claims over $5,000 totaled $362,083.30. The major one that brought that total up so much was Boyd's Construction that did our paving project at Daniel Boone. That was $192,800. Waste management, trash disposal for the month was $54,082.2. And VACOR, $42,097.75. So we had some larger checks come through that needed to be paid early. So that early set totaled $592,533.55. Current claims, as you'll see on the sheet, most of these are quarterly payments that were in the budget. So the total claims that need to be approved today is $923,726.73.
What'd you say that Boyd's Construction was for?
The paving project at Daniel Boone. That was through the recovery money.
ARPA project.
But it still shows up on our payments.
That was all the way up and parking at the fire facility?
Mm-hmm.
I suppose.
Yeah.
That's a lot of paving. I love that. My property looks really good with it done. All right. Need a motion to pay the bills on the total amount. As she said, it was $923,726.73. Do we have a motion to pay?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ms. Arns.
Under Ms. Solanys, I just want to give you an update on something from last meeting, which was the Bugit Hollow Lane road abandonment. The property owners came in and met with our mapping staff and them, as well as Mr. Dingus, went out and took a look at the property. And as of right now, we're not moving forward with that request. So just wanted to give you an update on where we were at this time.
Okay. Go ahead. I know where that's at, with a particular reason not moving forward.
The property is up for sale and the potential buyer is the one that wanted to abandon. So we're just, I think the property, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but I think the property owner was just going to leave it as is right now.
That's what I got, or.
The current property.
Side after we looked at. If the new buyer wants to go see what happened to the man, that's the route we got.
And it's like a four wheeler trail, I mean, it's not a drivable road.
You're right, so we don't want to set a precedence, right?
Well, it would land lock three, three properties, so we would, there's a lot involved in the process. At the time, it was mentioned last meeting, we didn't know that there was three landlocked properties.
That's the point I was getting at.
And they're not local, local people. One lives in Blountville, that's the closest, so they're two, I believe, are Ohio and North Carolina. So it would be more involved than we originally thought.
Okay. Like, anything else under Miss Solanias?
That's all I have.
Okay. All righty, get down to comments. Before we get into that, Ms. Hood and Mr. Dingus and myself was on the, we needed to, the trash collection stuff. We went down to Washington County, Tennessee to look at their compactor station. It's pretty amazing what they did, I don't know where we're going with this, but they have a pretty nice facility. They have five of those in the counties, I already said, Bill.
They have five for a hundred and fifty thousand people.
Yeah. And so we got fourteen sites for twenty-one thousand people, which we're, we're a big county. And while we were there, they were, and it was busy, busy, and he said, that's nothing what it is on Saturdays. He said, they're backed all the way back out to the four lane, people coming in. Imagine that many people with five sites in the county. So I don't know where we're going with this, but eventually probably we'll need to go to something like that, I have no idea what it, whatever cost. But anyway, we're looking at options on that. Bill, you want to add anything to that? I'm out of, I'm bringing the board up to date on it, so.
No, the committee is looking at options and looking at the future and what it means to have and operate Packer trucks and what that's going to cost in the future. And being able to have drivers to operate the Packer trucks and the current logistics that makes that a hard thing to keep going. We're, you know, just trying to see what the best route for the future is with the county.
So we don't know where we're going, Ms. Hood, she was impressed with the cell tower, that looked like a pine tree.
We need that in Scott County, I mean.
We need cell towers. It was in the.
It looked like a pine tree. And it just fit perfectly with the forest and everything. We need those in Scott County, that is awesome.
I thought it was too, I was, you know, when she saw, I sensed it, you know, I seen the little tower things on top of it, I thought that's a cell tower. And he verified it, she asked, you know, it was pretty neat to see that, it started a great station, he gets asked to come out and look at it, it's pretty amazing to see that.
That was the hollow, that pine tree up there.
See that, the cell tower looked like a pine tree and it had the limbs, everything, it fit right in with the landscape. And really going back to that, eventually, and with so many issues, and Bill talked about a lot, the Packer trucks, and so much hydraulics and so many things can go wrong. Even the guy down there talked about, you know, back in the day when they were doing all the issues they have with those kind of trucks. But anyway, they have a good setup there. Like I said, I can't see us doing fifteen of those or fourteen of those in the county, but maybe some way, somehow we can make it work to where we can do it and. But eventually we gotta do something, that's just my, my take on it. Anything else, Bill, you want to add? I just want to throw that in before we get to comments. Thank you, sir. All right. All right, comments, requests, recommendations, start with you, Mr. Jeter.
I'm good.
All right, Mr. Tipton. Just thinking, hold the staff for what they do and Sally and Frida and you as board members and us working together as a team. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Harrow.
Had some conversations with some of the EMS people here in the county. Of course, we've talked about it several times, about their being able to get paid by the insurance and all that. That's still a major problem. They are losing employees because they can go other places and make more. They're just unable to keep up with what is going on in other places. I'm afraid that it, I don't know the time period, but I'm afraid if that is going to continue, it'll end up being a major problem for the county because the county, the way I understand, the government part of it are required to provide these services. We are lucky to have what, what we do have, they're saving us, in my opinion, millions of dollars. Their increase in, on the fire side and the EMS side has, has not been increased in several years. I think we need to look at it, I, you know, we, I don't know. I'm always lenient about, or conservative about putting on another committee, sometimes I think we might have too many committees. But I think we do need to come up with something to look at this and get the real numbers, get, get what's going on. I don't want them to lose their freedom, their, being autonomous, you know, they're, they're their own things. You know, some people in the county believe that we fund them fully, we do not, we just help support them. But if something would happen, if the county would have to support them a hundred percent, we're looking at millions of dollars. So it, I don't know what, how we need to move forward. I do think that there needs to be an increase because, you know, just, just like Bill said about the truck drivers, you know, we had to increase, you know, the amount of pay for those truck drivers. And still, that evidently is not enough, but because they can go other places and make more money. So however we need to handle it, if anybody has any ideas, because down, down the road, if it continues, we'll be in, the county as a whole will be in a major problem. We'll have to come up with the money. There's, there, there's things called a fire tax, and every time I hear the word tax, I want to just fall over. But maybe that's something we need to look at, and I'm not saying add on to what's already there. Maybe there's a way to implement that into what we already have without raising the taxes. But that, that, that's something I think we need to look at, if anybody has any ideas. We need to, need to look at it.
We were in Lebanon on a VACO conference, Region twelve thirteen, Ms. Orange and I were there. We were asked about our funding for the fire departments, and we fund a lot more than their county does. So, yes, yes, sir?
Oh, it's a photographer.
Oh, you're a photographer, I thought you might be. Come on in, we'll be, we'll be done here in a minute. But anyway, their funding was a lot less than ours, and they were wondering the amount that we paid the fire departments, but it's something we can look at. Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Mr. Brick?
Nothing from me.
Ms. Hood?
Well, of course, the highlight of my month was those under the emergency plan who got water on Black Gun. I met with them and Atlanta Wisco last week, and they're celebrating, they're very, very happy, and I'm very happy for them. And I appreciate everybody who had a hand in that and the fire department taking them water all the time, that was, that was wonderful.
I'll say it, you may not, but you took water yourself to them, I mean, you actually passed the port of water to those folks. It's very commendable on your part to do that, you took a personal interest in doing that.
Thank you, Dan. And another highlight was the Fannin Bridge dedication, it was just a beautiful ceremony. Mr. Dingus was there, and when it was to begin, Mr. Fannin being a railroad train enthusiast, a train went by when the, when the ceremony was beginning to.
That's amazing.
Start, and it was just a beautiful, beautiful ceremony. And the weeds have been cut, even on my little rural road, and I'm like.
Those Twin Springs kids did that for you, you know.
I appreciate those kids at Twin Springs. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Addit.
I appreciate the staff and I love working with this board, I love working with Frida and Sally, I love that, I appreciate everything that they do. The ladies here, Tina and Amy, and everybody that works on the staff here. Bill, you guys do a phenomenal job, so I don't have anything else.
I do want to thank the staff and everything, we got all this information front of us here, don't just have them.
No.
On my, somebody has to work hard to get this in front of us and give us stuff to go through and everything, so I do appreciate that too. All right, we do have three items to go into closed session for, four?
Four.
One, two. This is not.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, all right, it's, thank you. So we have four items to go into closed session, for any motion, do you want to close session?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion?